Okay, now begin the open work session for Wycomico County Council. First item on the agenda is the 10-year solid waste management plan, which is Resolution 156-2015. All right, gentlemen?
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Make sure you speak right into those mics that have control hearing us at home.
So yes, Weston Young, Director of Public Works, and I have with me Mark Whitelock. He is our Superintendent of Solid Waste, if we have any operational questions to answer.
Did you want to give, okay, any questions coming from anybody?
I can give, so in, I guess to wrap it all up, the name essentially says what it is. It is a 10-year plan that covers the comprehensive solid waste actions within the county. The document touches on existing conditions as well as some planning for the future, touches on some private facilities that operate solid waste-type duties within the county, such as construction and demolition debris, medical waste. There's some new proposed facilities handling agricultural byproducts. And this 10-year study, or 10-year plan, is supposed to incorporate all of that, how waste is handled within the county. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
This is a requirement from MDE?
Yes.
EPA or just MDE?
MDE, and likely from the EPA in terms of solid waste legislation. The one thing I would like to note is that when we submitted this to get on council agenda, we've since found some minor issues, such as some of the convenience centers and recycling locations have changed over time. A good example of what we have to deal with is we currently have a recycling center located on SU property on Avery Street, and we've been notified that in a few years they plan to develop that. So we've already started some preliminary looking. So the positions of these recycling centers sometimes move as time goes on and development opportunities occur.
Questions?
I do, I've got to look for mine, so if somebody can go ahead of me.
Joe?
You mentioned-
Get that mic right there.
Yeah, I got it. You mentioned your drop-off recycling centers. I see, didn't we move the one from Purdue, Old Ocean City Road?
Yes, that is correct. The Purdue one's no longer there, but-
That's on page three of nine.
Yes.
Yeah, so that needs to be-
That particular one also needed to mention the Walmart North location, as well as the Avery Street. We also noticed that numbers three and four, the Civic Center, and then they have one called the City Park, which is basically the exact same location, Glen Avenue and Memorial Plaza. So there were, unfortunately, there were some things we didn't catch-
Yeah, that's fine.
-reading through this 100 times over.
Yeah, another one at page three, 10, said stakeholders, stakeholders will be involved in implementing the law, or county council or commissioners. Doesn't that need to be changed in some way to mention the county executive's office also?
Yes, and there was one in the beginning, too, about the acceptance of the document, I think in the introduction, that it should mention both approved by the county executive and voted on by council, some legislation like that. But that particular three, three-nine, was it, three-ten? That was regarding the apartment building and condominium recycling program, and that may have gone to resolution previously.
Well, this has all been done, was all probably done before we had a county executive, so this probably needs to go through. Okay, that's it for me.
Councilman Kilmer?
In terms of your recycling, I know there was a push at the landfill to get folks to separate out like cardboard, for instance, although like at the drop-off centers, that's not, there's no place for cardboard, is there?
Oh, there are cardboard bins located at each recycling center, sometimes two, in the case of areas like the Civic Center is a popular, we try to monitor that. But each of the convenience centers do have a cardboard drop-off. Sometimes it's hard, the, some of the bins are not, especially the cardboard, are not in the best shape, so maybe it's a repainting and re-labeling that could have made it look like we don't have one there. In addition, cardboard specifically, we do not have any spare bins. So when one gets picked up by a roll-off truck, sometimes there's no cardboard drop-off while that one's being emptied and then returned.
Now, is cardboard a profitable thing to recycle, or is it mainly just to get it out because it's so bulky? I mean, what's, I mean, I know a lot of recycling, like glass, for instance, that there's, do you operate at a loss with recycling? I mean, this, or, I mean, glass isn't very profitable.
Yeah, in short, yeah, glass is not profitable. We often have a tough time finding a source for that. We'll use it at the landfill for infiltration and stabilization at times, so it has some intrinsic value. We have worked with City of Salisbury historically, and more recently with Bennett Construction in terms of finding a market for the crushed glass. In terms of the concrete, maybe Mark will recall some of the numbers, but we do, we do get money for it, cardboard and paper. I think our metal, the bi-metal and aluminum cans tend to, tend to net the best amount. And then we have what we call our white goods, which is our scrap metal that accumulates, and we get a decent price for that as well.
I mean, but like glass and stuff like that, is that, that's a state, and I mean, this stuff comes from the state, right? All this sort of things that have to be-
Yes, and another thing that's important to note is in terms of our recycling percentage or recycling rate, it's based on tonnage. And we can collect all the plastic in the world, which is good, and again, we're limited by what types of plastic we can recycle. There really isn't a market for the bulk of it. But that has very little weight compared to glass. So it's just one of those things that behooves the county to bring in as much glass as possible because that ups our recycling tonnage and in turn improves our recycling rate based on the Maryland law way of looking at it.
So the state is encouraging us to recycle things that don't necessarily, we lose money on them, but we make the state standard?
Exactly. Yes. Now, the one thing to mention on glass is right now we do mixed glass. If we had a way of separating it into clear and brown and green, I know there's blue and other things like that, we could, we could actually get money for those, but all it would take is the wrong bottle to go in, shatter, and then we have a bunch of, you know, it then becomes-
Contaminated.
-contaminated, and that drops any sort of profitability. So I know in the past, they used to separate glass as well, but right now, I think with what we're doing, you know, we're able to, to take that, it stays out of the landfill, so it's not taking up space, and we're finding uses for it. And we're always open to new ideas with anything that can help divert things out of, out of the waste stream.
I know we're ahead on our recycling efforts for the state, but what type of innovative programs and projects do you have that'll keep us ahead?
For a little while, when I came on board, we had a pilot program regarding mattresses. We found a company that was willing to take mattresses and clean them up. I think they used, they just surround them with new mattress material and sell them. After a few rounds, they started getting pickier about what they took, and eventually it became to where they just said they did, they did not need mattresses any longer, they were done that program. So our, our ability to put those elsewhere kind of dried up. One of the things that does count towards our recycling rate is brush. So we're looking at ways we can increase the amount of brush we bring in and trying to look at some, say, business-friendly to the landscaping community, ways that help bring in the amount of brush we bring in. Education always helps, just letting people know. We look at, and we can provide data on each of our recycling areas and convenience center locations in terms of how much of each, each material we have coming in. So in some cases, we could say, and I'm not, you know, I'm not picking on, say, Mardele, but we could look at Mardele and say their plastic numbers are low, maybe we need to do something to figure out what are they doing with their plastics? Is it just going right into their trash? Other than that, you know, we have a current vacant, but we're planning to fill a recycling coordinator position, and as part of that, and per what's also in this 10-year plan, we need to check and assist if there's any apartments or condominiums over 10 units that by law are supposed to be offering recycling services, just following up, making sure they're doing that. And then there was a new law that was passed or needed to be implemented, and maybe Law can chime in October 1st, a few days ago, for any event on public land that has over 200 people and is serving food and drink, needs to offer recycling as an option. So that's something I've noticed, and not just in this county, but, but other events I've gone to, that they're not offering recycling. So this is something that will help the recycling rate, you know, it may be going after grants to just put recycling bins at our parks, or, or something like that. So, yeah, sorry.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember everything as we're going along, because you keep touching on things. Before I forget that, I think what I read, the special events is not an option. I think it's mandatory and it's enforceable by $50 a day, is what I read.
Yes, now that, that's also if it's on public space.
Okay.
If they're serving food and drink, and if it's over 200 people. So, you know, quite possibly the, you know, softball, baseball tournaments could draw that amount, you know, soccer games, not, not necessarily. So it does have to hit that threshold. And then it comes down to enforcement, and solid waste does not really have any sort of enforcement capability on that.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah, with, with illegal dumping, or, you know, having somebody, say, stealing metal out of our bins, you know, it's, we have to go above and beyond to try to stop those, those methods, and we don't necessarily have the staff to do that.
Mark's big enough, we just need to get him a badge.
Yeah. Deputize him.
Yeah.
Couple more things. The county, it's mandated by state 20% recycling, and we're doing 35%. That's great, that should be commended, so thank you for that. I didn't bring my reading glasses with me, and I hate to say that, I need them these days, that's all right, I'll try it. Institutional way on waste on 5-2, it says hospitals, and it says PRMC does not operate or incinerate or dispose their contaminated hazardous hospital waste. And then on a previous chapter three, it says-
Chapter three, yep.
...that they do incinerate approximately five tons a year of medical waste.
Yeah, that, that, chapter five, the five, on page 5-2, they do incinerate, and that was, that was one of the things we, that was probably one of the bigger things we caught, in addition to mentioning executive and council for, for the approval of these things. Yeah, that is a error we plan to fix.
Okay, good, well, I'm glad I read it and picked it up, and I hope you saw it. Another one on tire disposal. There's, there's two places in chapter five and chapter three again, and it says a private tire contractor in chapter five is Dirt Express Incorporated, and chapter three it says American Tire.
Anderson Tire, yeah.
Anderson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Anderson Tire was the old company that we used to do so in updating this document. That was one of the things, over a 10-year period, it, there was a lot of things that changed, such as the form of government, and-
Yes.
-you know, we caught that as well. That was one that I think at the time where it said tire haulers, it was viewed as not necessarily what we send out, because we, we work, we have a contract with Dirt Express currently to dispose of our tires, but I wasn't sure if Anderson, I think they're out of business now, but they, they may have worked with private haulers.
Just a few things I picked up on, and one more thing, how, how did we pick on the engineer out of Berlin to do the study?
Oh, this was done before me, but it was one of our own-call engineering firms. We have three firms that were selected, again, before me, but it's a process of having a master engineering contract, where instead of having to bid out each and every document, we would usually select one based on their strengths or weaknesses. In this case, EA, they do a lot of work for Worcester County's landfill, so I imagine that's why they were given it. The two other firms that we have a master contract with are KCI and WRA.
Which they're not local?
They're, they're not local. I think both, both have offices in Delaware.
Okay.
But they have strengths in other categories, and I guess in the choosing of that, they were weighted heavier than, or better than some of the local firms that applied.
Well, thank you, Weston.
No problem.
Councilor Hall?
I understand that this is a 10-year plan, but I have some concerns. We, you've got 125-acre facility that produces 90 tons of solid waste daily, and you're projecting that we've got 23 years left for the landfill. 23 years is not a very long time. What are, what are you doing to extend this length of time? I know you're talking about opening up another cell at this point, but are there any innovations to possibly extend the sale as we were looking at a couple of years ago with compacting and possibly outsourcing some of the waste that we had coming in?
Yes, I'll be glad to touch on that. If you turn to page 5-10, we have some of the, what was put together in terms of the planning, zero to five years, six to 10, and 10-plus. The construction of the new cell is included in that 23-year lifespan.
All three cells?
So we have-
Seven, eight, nine, or just seven?
There's four, there, it goes to 10.
Oh, goes to 10.
Yeah, we, we have five and six right now that we're finishing up. We, we would like to do two at a time and open up more space, and I, one of the things we would, we're considering in terms of modification is changing the way it drains, such that we can get rid of one less Leachate pump station. The thing to consider with the landfill is after we cap it and it's full, whatever we go to after that, if we have a new facility, or we have, you know, we're shipping it out, whatever, the county is obligated for 30 years after it is fully capped to maintain it. And having one less riser house, one less pump to worry about would be, I imagine, a cost savings going into the future. So one of the other things we're looking at, the engineering firm that has done most of the work with, with this landfill is called GeoSynTech, and they did a retaining wall type design, I think it was in Delaware, at a Delaware landfill, and they were able to increase capacity significantly by doing, basically going steeper and going higher. Anything we do to this particular landfill will likely need a modification and get state approval. The fact that they've done this elsewhere, you know, I have tasked them with just giving preliminary numbers, what would it cost to design this way, and what is the likely return on airspace? Going back to the recycling, anything we're able to divert, so if we can find another place for, say, mattresses and box springs, then that is bigger items that are not going into the landfill. The other thing is, some places use grinders. Now, our consultant GeoSynTech doesn't, doesn't look at that favorably, but essentially you could take something, and I'll keep talking about, let's say, box springs, that has a considerable size, but if you grind that down and then have a magnet pull the metal bits out of it, you're talking about maybe something, you know, size of a football. So the airspace is, is saved significantly by doing something like that. So considerations like-
Are you considering that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to, but then again, the cost to run and maintain that equipment would have to be looked at.
Incinerators also?
Incinerators is, is the old-fashioned way.
An aerobic or aerobic?
Yeah, there's, there's the aerobic and anaerobic digestion. In the incineration process, there's, does it just produce steam that you can do electricity, or do you want to take it another step and produce? Some places produce natural gas, and then they convert all their fleet to natural gas.
You mentioned manure and chicken waste, possibly?
So we have been in talks with the various poultry industries regarding the avian flu and, you know, providing malts to help them compost. I don't know if we, there's a private, right now there's private interest in terms of processing chicken waste and agricultural byproducts, and I don't know if we're quite ready to get into that or any sort of composting. One way to extend the life is to get the organics out, so have people remove their food waste, and then we compost that. But the facilities that have attempted that usually get horrible odors and have trouble containing those. I know one, I think it shut down recently in Delaware, and most of our, we hear a lot of stuff out of Delaware being its, with its proximity to us. So if we could find a location that would not have, say, residents screaming over horrible odors of compost, that, that could be something we consider as well, but given the county does not collect, you know, we do, we have private haulers that collect, we're not like, say, the City of Salisbury that has a collection system. They could implement, all right, here's your trash bin, here's your recycling bin, here's your compost bin, and have it collected like that. For us, it would be far more difficult, and we'd have to do something similar to our recycling locations, where we have people separate it there, and then we risk contamination or something of that nature. If a hazardous material got dumped in, and then the compost wouldn't be good for spreading on crops or whatever its final use would be. So if you, if you go back to page 5-10, we are looking at a bunch of stuff, and I don't want to say this is everything, you know, we're bouncing around new ideas, not just internally, but also with the consultants we, we talk with, both ones we have under contract and others. So we're, we're trying to think of how we can extend the life of this one as far as possible, and in many ways, we can do it while increasing our recycling rate and other, other benefits as well. But to be fair, this is for the next 10 years, and with a 23-year, I think the next 10-year plan will be the one that really starts, really puts that into, into the spotlight in terms of how, how do we plan to continue operations at that point? And hopefully, we'll, we will have figured things out right, figured things out at that point.
Yeah, I've got two or three things. I don't want to drag this out too long, but I have this fear at one sometime that we're going to have a room full of people here that, on page 5.5-3, seppage, says here, seppage generated within Wycomico County is taking the various sewage treatment plants outside of Wycomico County. You know, that's been the practice, I guess, there's nowhere for our septic companies to dump into Wycomico County anywhere. What would happen if suddenly the other counties cut them off and said, "We're not accepting anything from other counties"?
That's a great point. One of the things mentioned in the state law, I think it's in .02 general provisions, is that the department, MDE, may require the installation of a solid waste disposal system if deemed necessary after considering the factors. It's basically if they find that we're lacking a way of disposing a certain waste, you know, we have special rules for asbestos, but, you know, it could be the next building material out there is deemed unsafe, and then we will be tasked, or if it's hazardous enough, then, then the state would have to provide. So in the case of septic drying up around-
The city used to do that, right? Used to accept it, is that right?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. The next question, John, I understand John's concern about the, you know, running out of time. However, Worcester County had another problem, and it could be our problem, Ocean City quit giving them their waste and started shipping it out of state, so I guess their landfill is operating at a deficit because of that. We're in a unique business, you know, we're, you've got to have enough of it to keep it going, and then if you get too much, you're full.
Exactly.
So I don't know, that's a balancing act, but that could really, that could really upset the apple cart if a couple of our main municipalities quit sending us their waste, you know.
Exactly. So if, if we ever get into a tipping fee change discussion, and that may need to happen down the road, but right now, I think we're confident the $60 a ton is sufficient. But in the future, if we talk to bumping it at all, that is a consideration, is, you know, bringing the city on, the cities onboard and how that, how that affects them.
Yeah. And the grinder, you mentioned the grinder, I think that's, you take bulk stuff like mattresses and box springs, you know, you can, you can get that stuff down, that's, I think that'd save you a lot of room.
Yeah. At that point, I think, yeah, it'd be the cost of the energy and maintenance on it. Our tub grinder that grinds the brush, every now and then something will sneak in like a sledgehammer head, and that'll set us back several thousand dollars. So those, those pieces of equipment are not cheap in terms of maintenance, as well as operational costs.
What's the cost of new cell construction right now? What's the problem?
Design is going to be somewhere between 90 and 100,000. And the construction, if we do two cells at a time, we're anticipating 9 million at the most, eight to nine million. If we try to do something like the retaining wall idea, that, that may increase both design and construction costs, but it should give us more airspace. That's something that if we decided to go that route and pursue MDE permit modification, we would go through the executive's office to make sure, you know, that, that they're full, well aware of what we're, what we're pursuing.
Do we have enough money bank to take care of that?
Yes, I believe we do, but we may, we may want to bond part of it to, for, and we'll leave that up to administration to decide.
Yeah, Maryland backed off on their zero-waste policy, as I understand it, maybe? Question I have is, and maybe they haven't, but sooner or later, I think we're going to have to get into, go to that general route. I know that gasification was brought up, you know, about a year ago as alternatives. We can't keep burying it, we can't keep burying it, and 9 million is expensive. This is a long-term 10-year plan. Do you think that the gasification, the zero-waste is going to be in the following 10-year plan, or is it something we should be thinking about ahead of time?
I see you have here waste of energy, six to 10-year.
It was suggested as one of the five alternatives, but it, the, the one that's been chosen is the expansion, so I was kind of curi-, you're right, I was kind of curious if we are going to revisit the resource recovery, renewable part of it.
So it's, it's my understanding that the zero-waste hasn't been taken off the table yet, but that the current governor is not a fan of it. So it's very likely it will get pulled off the table. You are correct, you know, we will run out of space eventually to, to bury it. One of the problems with the waste of energy is the commercial viability. There's a lot of small-scale options that work really well, but trying to find a large-scale that works is what, what we're looking at. There's several options in terms of, does it produce what is known as syn gas, or does it produce natural gas? You can do a really high heat that produces other types of oils and activated carbon as a byproduct. So it is something we, we do need to consider. We did have a, I think it was in Baltimore, an incinerator closed recently, so just the old-fashioned, burn it, and then that's, that's a way of reducing the airspace, because you're just dealing with ash at that point. So-
But incineration is considered to be recycling as well when it produces electricity on the backside?
Yeah, that's right.
So that does a two-year-
Does that go with zero-waste, because it's not the cleanest policy?
Yeah, now, now, a part of zero-waste also, and I don't know how Maryland would have any control over that, but that is to make the manufacturers have an end in mind. So instead of just, I produce toasters and I sell toasters, what happens when that toaster dies in a few years? They, they would like the manufacturers to have a plan to, you know, in the mattress manufacturers, have a plan to recycle what they create, and then, you know, that's going to involve a change in design, a, you know, cradle-to-grave concept that, you know, we design it such that we can then take it back and repurpose it or something, rather than when it, when it dies, it comes to Newland Park landfill and we pay to dispose of it as part of our e-waste contract.
I wonder also, because it's a long-term 10-year plan, whether or not, under your purview, we might be looking at some type of a county-wide wastewater treatment authority just to, to resolve the issue that we know that we have right now with failing septic systems. It's a hu-, it's, it's a lot to take on, it's a huge bite out of an apple, but I didn't know, since we're talking 10-year, 20-year plans, what your thoughts were on that part of it.
Yeah, it is definitely something we need to consider. Taking, and it's a different topic than, say, solid waste, but taking failing septics and putting them on municipal sewer helps with the Chesapeake Bay cleanup efforts. It, it is a great nitrogen remover. Right now, where we do not operate any treatment plants, we have to coordinate with the municipalities to see if they would be open to an urban, urban service district or something like that. It could behoove us to have these separate wastewater plants, but in terms of personnel and things like that, that, I think a bigger study would need to occur in terms of the feasibility and if the county would like to get into that.
Yeah, because it's either going to be a decentralized location, or else there would be units within the county. So I just didn't know. So, I just didn't know, and again, I know you're talking solid waste, but this is going to come into-
One, one of the benefits of, of that type of organization is that if you have multiple treatment plants and they're under the same entity, sometimes you can juggle and trade. So, if the, say, nitrogen output on one is unfavorable, but you're over-treating in all the others, sometimes they'll let you kind of do a mass balance there, and, you know, that, that helps you. Instead of having to do major upgrades on all of them, you can kind of strategize with that.
I have one quick question. In our recycling effort, 35% is brought up, is it? Do we get credit for outside recyclers such as the scrap yards that do cars and Bennett Construction? Is that part of our credit, too?
Yes, so what we do is we send out annually notices to each of the businesses that have recycling efforts, and we get them to write. Yeah, Bennett, Bennett gives us their numbers every year, and-
So, we're here, Salisbury Scrap Metal-
Yep, yep, the scrap places, we, we follow up with all of them. That's, that's, while it's currently vacant, the recycling coordinator position, that's one of their duties, is, is tracking that down, and I'm sure there's some places that, you know, they're, they're recycling their cardboard, but we're not getting that number.
Well, listen, thank you very much, Mr. Whitelock, Mr. Young, we appreciate the, the hard work you put into it and entertaining the council here with our questions. It'll go to public hearing as we have scheduled, and we'll go from there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And we'll make the changes we spoke about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like it brought back to the next council meeting for a vote?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we're going to have a public hearing on it, and-
You had it today?
We already had it.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at what I wrote down here.
Will we see those changes?
I, I think so, or let's do that.
Is that enough time for you?
Give them a chance, let's give them a chance to clean it up.
I think so, I think so.
Weston, will you be doing it, your office be doing it, we'll be doing it?
Yeah.
Or we'll clean up?
Yeah, we'll be making the changes.
Then we'll let us know, let the executive know when you're ready to have it adopted.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to close the open work session, so we can go to the closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, work session is closed.